Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, January 31, 2023. I have one meeting announcement. All meetings are live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Would the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavell.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Do we want to have this Catholic Schools Week? Do you have kids here? Do you want to come up and say the pledge? Hi, thanks for joining us. Which church were you from? St. Bede?
Yeah.
St. Bede. Thank you for joining us. Okay. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and we're going to stay standing for a moment of silence. We'll start. A pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can sit there if you want, if that's okay, because you'll be coming up for a proclamation pretty soon, okay? And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
The second? Any discussion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. And our next order of business is the presentation of proclamations. And I have two to present to myself. Councilman Kraus and I have one together, and we have one from Councilman Wilson and one to be read into the record from myself as well. So we will start with Councilman Kraus and Willie McCain.
Are we going to do that? We just ruined the surprise, I guess. You're going to bring them up, right?
Yeah, of course. Madam President, you have the prop there for you to sign. Good morning, everybody. Well, Willie, I don't know what they told you to get you here, and you probably kind of knew anyway.
So let me tell you what I, we did. We called Amy Downs. I said, "When in doubt, call Amy Downs," because we've been trying to do this for over a year. And so, when in doubt, we called Amy, and she, whatever she and her team did, they did it.
So, uh...
He thinks he's here for somebody else.
Come on up and bring, please, Rich, will you bring everybody that came? Susie, will you come up as well to everybody? Come on up, and we'll take a minute to embarrass you a little bit.
Councilman.
Thank you. Come on, can we have everybody, Jen? Come on, please. Hey. I don't, he said, "I don't like this." It's okay. We had to do it. You know, he's just one of the nicest guys I've ever had the privilege to know, and that's professionally and personally. He's just a damn nice guy, and you, you, whatever it might be that's going on, I never, ever hesitated to pick up the phone to call Willie and say, "There's graffiti on the 10th Street Bridge, and the bridge is beautiful." You know that, Rich, I love that bridge. And, you know, the next, Willie's like, "Yep, we're on it, ba, ba, ba," and the next day, it's done. Just, it's just, you know, and he's a Southsider, a lifelong Southsider, along with his sister Susie here. I knew their mother Helen well, their brother Larry, and so, we just, we kind of go way back. And so, but you go further back. You go way, way back with Willie. You want to say that?
We went to school together, so for the Catholic School kids, we went to school, and he listened, and one of us did not, and she became President of City Council.
Okay, so, Willie, this is your life. Okay, so whereas William Willie McCain, CPA, was born on March 15, 1960, to wonderful parents, William Robert McCain and Helen Nell McCain, and is the fourth of six children. And whereas Willie grew up in the Southside Flats, playing basketball for Southside Catholic Grade School and Southside Catholic High School. He held the title of all-time assist leader of the Southside Catholic High School basketball team and named team captain from 1972 until his graduation in 1978. Willie's teammate voted him MVP in his senior year. And Willie has always shown strong promise as a leader. His beloved basketball coach at Southside Catholic Grade School, Coach Ben Savinas, wrote to Willie's parents that he had the ability, the personality, and the true leadership skills to fill the position of team captain. His leadership skills continued to shine when Willie was appointed as Allegheny County Manager in August of 2012. And whereas Mr. McCain is a graduate of Robert Morris University and a certified public accountant who has worked in government and not-for-profit accounting and finance for 30 years now. He has served nearly the entirety of Allegheny County Executive Rich Fitzgerald's three terms. He is leaving his position as county manager on February 3, after serving over 20 years, and we're all diminished for it. And whereas Mr. Fitzgerald credited Willie with several fiscal achievements over the past 10 years, including but not limited to avoiding increases in county property taxes while increasing the county's reserves, playing a role in the county boosting its bond rating from credit agencies, building, bringing more technology to county government, and increasing transparency through publishing county data online. And whereas Willie is a member of the Government Finance Officers Association and the Pennsylvania Institute of Certified Public Accountants, and has been a frequent presenter at state and local conferences. In addition, he has participated in numerous seminars as a presenter for the Local Government Academy and has been a budget finance team member of LGA Pillars of Good Government. And so now therefore be it resolved that this council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and thank Willie for his dedicated service to the county of Allegheny. And be it even further resolved that this council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare today, or no, February 3, 2023, to be William McCain Day here in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Congratulations. Thank you for your work. I'm going to say something before he goes. So, over the years, I would say to Willie, "Hey, Will," I says, "if you don't, you know, help me with this issue or this problem, I have a photo of you in your little basketball shorts." I said, "So don't make me pull out the old photos." Good, I'm sorry. Thank you. Good, Willie, say if you would. And then will it count?
So, I really don't like the recognition. Recognition is in the service that we do as public servants, so I do really, really appreciate this. And for City Council, you know, because you provide public service, and, and I'm here with people that I work with every day, and I thank Jennifer for recommending me to Rich. I thank Rich for this honor. It's been an honor to serve, and for Amy, and Susie's here, my mom and dad, and it's been the greatest job I've ever had. And so it's bittersweet for me to leave. I love government. We make a difference. I found out during COVID, you know, a lot of people complain about government, but I'll tell you, man, did they, did they turn to government when they needed help? We help people, you know, every day to have a level playing field and to help people. And, and I always think, you know, about my job as manager. I read this, this article one time where someone said to a panel of people, "What's the definition of a job?" And one of the respondents said, "There's only two types of jobs. One job is to keep the world going, and the other job is to change the world." So my job was to keep the world going while the talented people change the world. And, and that's all I wanted to do, was keep it going, to allow people to change the world, and that's what public service does. So I'm really grateful for the opportunity I have, and, and thank you. This is a real honor. Thank you.
Do you want to say if you would?
I can't say enough about the work that, that this man has done over these last 12 years, 11-plus years. I'll give you one quick story that will, will, something that you can all identify with. It was the day after Ash Wednesday a few years ago, and I walked into the office and my secretary handed me a note and said, "You, you need to return this, this phone call." And it was from Bishop Zubik. I hadn't gotten ashes, and I immediately turned into a 10-year-old grade school boy from St. Lawrence, O'Toole. How did the bishop know I didn't get my ashes? And was going to, you know, and yet we all, we get down the street, you get to the point, you get the ashes, you get, "I need to do it this way." I called him. He said, "Mr. County Executive." I knew that wasn't going to be a good call when he started off with that. "Our fish fries have not been approved by your health department, and tomorrow is the first day, the first Friday of Lent that we need to do this." So immediately I get on the phone and say, "Willie, do you think we can get this taken care of? Be it said that the next day, all the fish fries were open and online," and I know you guys go to them, St. Mary's or the ones, St. Rayfield's, all of them. That's the kind of job Willie does. Immediately gets things done, takes care of problems, and we're so proud of the work he's done. Congratulations, Willie.
Anyone else?
Okay. Madam President, you have some remarks, right?
Well, I pretty much said them, I think. I embarrassed the poor guy to death. But I do want to thank you for all the work that you do, have done for the county. I'm going to acknowledge what an amazing family you came from. Your family has done so much and is so respected on the South Side of Pittsburgh, but also southwest of the river. So I just want to say thank you for all that you've done. County Exec is one of the best choices you ever made. Thank you. Thank you.
More open up to members if you wish to make comments. Anthony?
Yes, thank you. I also have pictures, Madam President, of Willie in his shorts, you know, when he was playing St. Mary's years ago.
I think I could add a lot to that one.
We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of ammo for him, so, no, Willie, I consider you a good friend. You know, congratulations on a wonderful career. And we were talking just the other night, and, you know, Willie, as you mentioned, was a very good basketball player in his day, all-time assist leader, so, and he compares that to what he does for the county. He's the point guard for the county. And you know what? I thought that was a really great analogy. You kind of run the show, and the county executive is always the first one to say, he surrounds himself with really good people. And Jen, and Amy, and Willie, you three are shining examples of that, so congratulations again. I know you're not done working, but, you know, for your next step, I wish you all the best, and glad to be here and support you for this today. Thank you, Willie.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you also, Mr. McCain, and I really appreciate your comments today. That, that comment about two kinds of people, those who keep things going on a daily basis and those are there to change the world, I think that really helped enlighten me about some of the, you know, pushes and pulls that we feel on a daily basis in this job. So I really appreciate your wisdom there and your service at keeping things going. I'm glad the councilman also brought up bridges too, because you've been helpful for a few of the bridges that we've had to deal with, either clearing snow or working with the kind of bike lane that we're hoping to put under one of your bridges, and we really appreciate your cooperation and your service. And good luck to you on, on all your next adventures. Appreciate it.
Yep, please, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Willie, I want to, I thank you for your service. Whenever someone new starts in my office as a City Council office, I try to introduce them to the people in each department who really are the ones to get things done, who, you know, you can cut through any kind of red tape and they will be the one to, they're, they're your ringer and they get things done. And those people exist in all throughout the city and throughout the county. And you're that person. You have been that person for the county, I know that. You have been a go-to for so many people, including our office, when we've needed things. And for that, I consider you an unsung, unsung hero. So thank you for your service, and I wish you all the best.
May I go with Councilwoman Warwick and Councilman Wilson?
Sure, I just want to say I'm, I'm feeling a little unlucky that I just got here and you're leaving. So, you know, this is great. Your, your words were very powerful, and especially about the importance of government. You're right. It's, you know, this government, the county, the city has done a lot of good in the past few years, and that's much, and thanks to you, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And thank you, Councilman, for doing this and recognizing, you know, Willie McCain and everything he's done, because, you know, working with two governments that are ultimately have to work together all the time, you know, I appreciate all the work you've done, so I appreciate your, your service to Allegheny County and the city, and I wish you all the
Talked a lot over the years about the importance of building relationships. Rich, and how many times we talked about that, the, you know, that we're, we're, our ability to accomplish the goals that we set for ourselves are directly connected to our ability to build relationships. And this was probably the, one of the easiest men, people that I ever met that, you know, it's a two-way street in relationship building. You know, you, you know, if, if the other person isn't willing, you know, you kind of have to move on, but such a willing partner on so many things, they, you know, they were largely small things, but it's the small things that constituency care about that really, really hope that we're able to accomplish for them. And, and he was always just such a willing partner, and I just wanted to throw that in there for one last comment. So can we have all members for a picture, please?
I think I'm just going to add before we leave, thanks to Sister, Sister Chris and Sister Francine for all their discipline over the years, for making sure Willie excelled and I listened.
I think everybody's seen that Amy was going to take it.
Is your family?
We're on the little fall.
Is it?
Which one?
Then get in one, jump in one, and we'll Christmas send it to you. Fine, he's going to send it to me.
Good? Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Really. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, thanks, Susie. Thank you. These are from Catholics.
Okay, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you.
What is it? St. Benedict's?
St. Bede. 10th Street from my house.
Oh, is that right?
It's on Dallas Avenue.
And next we have Catholic Schools Week. You waited patiently, so you get to come up.
Well, you gotta get up there and give a speech.
Everyone come up for Catholic Schools Week, please. I think Willie should want to stay for this one, be permitted.
How you doing? Good to be seen.
Oh, hi. How are you? It's Bill Paduto's sister-in-law, right? Okay. I want to make sure I said that right. And you can talk about your title and all that. I'm going to read without my glasses, so I hope I'm doing okay here. Whereas the 49th annual celebration of Catholic Schools Week will be, will be served, service, I'm sorry, will be service. Is that right? It says, "Whereas Catholic Schools, National Schools Week will be service." So it's my, staff missed something there. Okay, I'm thinking that doesn't sound right. Okay, so we'll correct that. Whereas the schools of the Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh instill passion in their teachers and motivate, and motivate the children and to achieve to the best of their ability by seeking academic excellence, strong faith, and service to the community. And whereas 99% of the students who attend Catholic High School graduate, and those of those, 86% go on to attend a four-year college, all indications to include that Catholic Schools are producing extraordinary young people who are successful and committed to their future. And you really are, so thank you, and you do a great job. Whereas when dedicated teachers base their methods on a love of the church, for the church, they create an atmosphere of servants and leaders, which is what makes Catholic Schools succeed. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Catholic Schools of the Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh that serve our city residents for teaching students to become faith-filled disciples, future leaders, and enriched citizens in our communities. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 29 to February 4, 2023, to be Catholic Schools Week in the city of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. I should have had one of you read it, as you probably can see. Do you want to come on? And just say who you are, introduce the kids too? Okay. Thank you. And say your title and everything.
Hello, I'm Michelle Paduto. I'm the Superintendent of Schools for the Diocese of Pittsburgh, and these are my friends, some students from St. Bede. We also have Sister Daniela Branca, who is the principal of St. Bede, two assistant superintendents here, one for the south region, which encompasses, I'm sorry, the east region, which encompasses the city of Pittsburgh, and our assistant superintendent works with me. We have, you want to introduce yourselves? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ryan Smith.
Okay, Ryan.
I'm Quinn Connor.
I'm Jenna Smith.
I'm Nora Knoll.
I'm Will Mullen.
You know why Smith is a good name? Because this is Councilwoman Smith. Yes, she likes that name. I just, I want to, for Catholic Schools Week, we celebrate our parents, our teachers, our administrators, our whole school community, and we are blessed and privileged and truly honored to be part of the fabric that is the city of Pittsburgh, and we, so, it just, in closing, we just thank you all very much, and we hope we're here for a very long time. We're in four counties, and we've served southwestern Pennsylvania for over 200 years. So, thank you.
Okay, you may not want to say anything, but you have to come up and at least tell the people who you are, who's here, if you don't mind. Sorry, thank you. Everyone.
Hi, I'm Sharon Lockard Brown. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for the Diocese of Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
Morning, I'm John Cuniak. I'm the Regional Administrator for the Pittsburgh East Regional Catholic Elementary Schools, which includes St. Bede.
Where's St. Bede's located?
Point Breeze.
Point Breeze.
Hi.
Good morning, I'm Sister Daniela, and I'm a principal at a wonderful school, St. Bede in Point Breeze.
What order?
I'm Holy Family of Nazareth, Sister of the Holy Family of Nazareth.
I wanted to make sure you weren't, you know, one of the Franciscans' nuns or Mercy nuns that taught me and used a yardstick.
Haven't used one yet.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Rachel Mullen. I'm a teacher at St. Bede School and all these lovely kids, and I'm also a mom of Will and three other Catholic School kids.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Everyone come up for the photo? Come up over here, we're going to take a photo with all of you. I love seeing all that Smith behind you on your shirts, that's why I knew you were all Smith. I had such a hard time with that one. She's sitting down, I see her.
What'd I do?
No, we're going to do Commander Zett, get the police back. Okay, so, thank you.
She's retired.
Yeah, do you want to come in, sir, real quick? And we're going to, next to Commander Zett, and I'm going to have Councilman Kraus read because he has his glasses. Commander Zett and your family and everyone with you, please join us.
Yes, please. Everyone who came with Commander, please come up. Everyone. Please.
But I am going to just say, we want to thank you, Commander Zett. Commander Zett's going to Ross Township, where my daughter is, so I'm happy about that, but at the same time, really sad that we're losing you in the city of Pittsburgh. You have done a tremendous job for Pittsburgh, and, you know, I tell people during some of the most difficult times, you were the commander of our zone, and you really did a great job holding down things in Zone 6, especially in areas where they were really struggling. I tell people, she's not going to be the person that's going to sit there and cheer you on and pretend it's stuff at a community meeting, but she's going to be the person that gets things done and keeps people safe. And I want to thank you for the, for the effort you put into our district, and Councilman Coghill's and Kraus's districts as well. And Councilman Kraus, or Coghill, do you want to come up?
Yep, happy to do so. Whereas Commander Kristin Zett retired from the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police on January 13, 2023, after serving nearly 23 years with the Bureau. And whereas Commander started her career with the City of Pittsburgh Police Bureau on January 24, 2000, and became a patrol officer with the Bureau on October 2, 2000, assigned to Zone 1. Officer Zett has worked in major crimes, subsequently appointed to detective in missing persons and narcotics and vice. She then moved up the ranks from sergeant to lieutenant, assigned to Zone 4, and later as the Training Academy's director, where she oversaw the basic recruit training as well as in-service training for veteran officers. And whereas Commander Zett has served in many capacities using her leadership skills and knowledge. As a state-certified instructor, she has served on committees developing statewide training in the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission, and has served as a city-to-city liaison in exchange programs with Fort Worth, Texas, Gary, Indiana Police Departments. She also served as the Bureau's Incident Commander for the Pittsburgh Marathon. She was also appointed to the Pittsburgh's procedural justice unit, where she helped develop and instruct implicit bias training in both, for both officers and members of our communities. And whereas after her promotion to commander in July of 2016, she was assigned to the professional standards, Zone 2, and finally Zone 6, West End Station, from where she retired. And whereas in 2019, she became a graduate of the FBI National Academy, session number 277, with an undergraduate degree in political science from St. Bonaventure University. She completed a master's of science in law enforcement and public safety leadership from the University of San Diego in May of 2022. So now therefore be resolved that this council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby commend and thank Commander Zett for her years of faithful service to the, our city and Pittsburgh Bureau of Police. And then be it even further resolved that this council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, January 31, 2023, to be Kristin Zett Day here in the city of Pittsburgh. Congratulations.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, thank you very much. I think I'm just really grateful for the opportunities that the city gave me, grateful to my parents, my dad, who made me become a city police officer. And over the years, all of the opportunities that I was given and all the chances I was given, the support I got from, you know, many council members over the years, really helped me to, to, to develop into who I am. My family has stuck by me with everything, policeman's ball, selling raffle tickets, you know, keeping track of my kids while I...
policeman's ball, selling raffle tickets, you know, keeping track of my kids while I work crazy hours. So, thank you to everybody. I really appreciate it. And thank you very much for taking the time to do this.
I'm so thankful.
Thank you.[609.32][609.32](Applause).
Thank you so much.
Commander Zett, thank you for your service. I really do appreciate you. When you told me about a month ago that you were thinking about departing, I was really heartbroken. But I wanted you to know, it is a family affair with the Zets. You know, her brother is here, who's also a police officer, and I believe your husband is also serves on the force. So, I just really want to thank you for being so responsive to me. Anytime I needed to talk to you, you were there for me. And, you know, opportunity knocks. You know, I wish we weren't losing you, but good luck at Ross Township, correct?
Yes.
So, so they're gaining a great chief. I believe the first female chief Ross Township has ever had, so, thanks.[655.12][655.12](Applause). So, congratulations, and I'm glad you make our neighborhood your home, and I believe you're going to continue to do that, right? So, thank you.
Are any members of the family like the Zetts, who you're welcome to?
I'm just going to say, Commander, there were times in our community that you did
so much. You were really good with the kids in the community. You were really good with the people in the neighborhoods, especially setting clear goals and expectations and making people understand what it is you can and cannot do, and how we can do things differently. But mostly because you kept the lid on one of my neighborhoods that was really having a really difficult time. And I said to somebody, she's not going to be that person that's going to pick up the phone, sit in community meetings, and pretend everything's fine. She's going to get things done. And that's what you did. And I mean, I want to thank you for keeping so many people safe when you were in Zone Six and helping us so much. And when, the second she left, we started having issues. I just want to say that. So, so I do want to thank you for everything that you've done and wish you well. And I think that Ross Township made a great, great choice. I'm hoping that Pittsburgh can still your back someday. Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else in the family want to say anything? No?
Would you like all members?
Yeah, all members?
Can we move in a little bit and let's take a photograph?
(Laughter). Okay, thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Commander. Thank you, Chief Zett. And we have, I can't see. One from Councilman Wilson to be presented. I can't see.
Thank you, Madam President. I, it's my, take your time, Jake. So, this is, we save the best for last, because anytime someone gets a, gets to work with their, you know, one of their school buddies from the past, it's a, it's a good moment. But I've also had the pleasure of, of knowing his father for some time, off and on. We've connected. So, I have some of those stories as well. But I'm sure Jake, Arisik, and, and also his mom Stephanie Flom, and grandmother Edith Schneider is, you know, you know, they've come here today for, for the proclamation for Jake's father, and, you know, your husband and son-in-law. So, we haven't had the pleasure of meeting, but I know all about this guy. So, I'm sure, you know, Jake's probably wondering what I'm going to say about him. I'm probably worried about what he's going to say about me. But maybe I'll just run through a couple of things. One, everyone should know that Jake is the, the author of the Shenley Experience. And because of everything that happened with Shenley, well, I don't know, you could probably talk about it. Obviously, you could talk about it. But if you haven't read the book, you know, I implore you to read the book. But Jake and I met prior to that at Frick International Studies Academy in Oakland. And we did a few things together. We got a couple swimming championships together at Frick. Three, two?
Two.
Two. Okay. It's three in my mind. But then, you know, so there was some, some great moments there. I think we kind of gave him the call at, at high school is whenever I met your dad. And I, I remember coming to your house, which I had to come from the north side, and they live in Highland Park, so I had to travel all this way, you know, cross the river, go over there. And they were like, what are you doing over here? So, I was in the east end, and immediately when I walked in the house, I was like, you have a library in your front, in your front room? And he, and his dad just like joked with me, like, yeah, there are books. Have you ever seen them before? So, every time I would run into him, because he was also at, well, you'll see here, you know, he's, was at Pitt a lot, and I was too. And he just always had a great sense of humor, and it was a pleasure to, to know him. And obviously, it's been quite an adventure knowing Jake this whole time as well. But whereas, Peter Arisik, a prolific poet, publisher, professor, printer, and painter, was a champion of Pittsburgh in the literary arts. And Peter, a native of Ford City, Armstrong County of a, and a lifelong western Pennsylvanian, was the author of 10 books and the editor of an additional seven books. And whereas, Peter earned a BA and an MFay from the University of Pittsburgh, served as Marketing Director and late acting director of the University of Pittsburgh Press, and taught at Carnegie Mellon University, Chatham University, the University of Pittsburgh, Emerson College, and in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. And Peter's love for this region and for literature led to him, led him to author the Pittsburgh novel, Western Pennsylvania in Fiction and Drama, 1972 through 2022, an annotated bibliography of all known fiction with a significant, geographical setting in any of Pennsylvania's 26 westernmost counties. What a, that's a lot. Whereas, yeah, and we come to this point. Whereas, in Peter's honor, Jake worked for over six years to complete the Pittsburgh novel and ensure its publication. And whereas, on January 31, 2023, the Pittsburgh novel is published by Penn State University Libraries, Open Publishing Imprint. And whereas, the Pittsburgh novel includes more than 1,500 novels, short stories, stage plays, motion pictures, and television series by writers as significant and varied as Willa Cathar, August Wilson, E.L., Dr. O., John Edgar Weidman, Michael, Michael Chabon, Stephen King, Mary Roberts Reinhardt, and Kurt Vonnegut. And whereas, the Pittsburgh novel, that Peter's visionary concept will, will reintroduce western Pennsylvania to the world through 230 years of fiction and forever memorialize these works that celebrate our region. And now for, now for be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh congratulates and celebrates Peter Arisik for his extraordinary commitment to our region and the liter, and the literary, literary arts and his publication. Your dad would be very disappointed with me. Of the Pittsburgh novel, an unprecedented resource which honors all of western Pennsylvania. And further be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declares Tuesday, January 31, 2023, to be Peter Arisik Day and the Pittsburgh Novel Day here in our City of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Congratulations.[1105.08][1105.08](Applause).
Jake, would I just say a few words?
My family and I are so grateful to Councilman Wilson and to Council for this great honor. I know my father would be very proud and embarrassed, in a good way. The, the project is, his idea, his, his brainchild, and it's just an amazing thing that he had this idea informally 40 years ago, but more formally about 10 or 13 years ago, to find every book, movie, play, whatever, ever set in Pittsburgh and put them in a database. And part of it was really hard in, you know, searching the internet and being in the bowels of libraries and blowing dust off of things, and sometimes reading whole books to find out they don't have a Pittsburgh setting. But then part of it was fun in watching a lot of movies like Striking Distance and Sudden Death. And thank you to patience, for your patience, to my wife, who had to watch many of these movies with me and insist that, you know, I'm working, as I tried to complete this project after my father passed away in 2016. So, I hope all Pittsburghers use this resource and find one thing that was his idea and is such a great idea. Instead of just listing the books, he lists all the landmarks, you know, not just the neighborhoods and not just the townships, but Shenley Park, Forbes Field, the Highland Park Reservoir, what, all these individual landmarks, if they appear in one of these works, you can click on them and find all the books that are set there. So, we also thank Penn State for their amazing cooperation and their hard work to make this a reality. And that can't believe and are so glad it's finally here. Yeah, I didn't know what you were going to say, Councilman. You took it easy on me. I, I remember, this is a little goofy, but I went through this quirky phase in high school where, you know, my, lucky to have my parents be married my whole life. And, but for some reason, my brothers and I in high school started calling my dad by his first name, Pete, instead of Dad. And one time, my dad was driving us somewhere, and you were with us. Remember, we were at the gas station across from Peabody High School, and he went in to pump the gas. And I said, oh, can you get me a drink? Pete. And Bobby pulled me aside, and he said, I thought that was your real dad. I didn't know your parents were divorced. I'm so sorry. And I said, that's my real dad. They aren't divorced. And he says, why do you call him Pete? And I said, I don't know. I'm a little goofy, Bobby. But thank you again for the honor.[1285.42][1285.42](Applause).
Just a quick, just a quick thank you. What a, what a beautiful way to honor this work. I hope you all have a lot of fun searching city council chambers. Maybe a murder happened here. You know, your hometown, your, your high school, and fictional murder, fictional murder. It's, it's all fiction. And what an honor Peter is certainly with us here today. Thank you.[1308.42][1308.42](Applause).
So, today we've heard about Peter's accomplishments, but we never heard about Peter. Peter was a beautiful, loving man, loved everyone around him, and everybody loved Peter, and we miss him to this day.[1327.75][1327.75](Applause).
Councilman Wilson, with all members?
Sure.
And I'm glad to see as soon as she said something about murder, our sergeant in arms looked up right away.[1347.45][1347.45](Laughter). Engagement Office, who, pardon me, said that I needed my glasses, and they ran down me a pair so I could read. So, thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Two, two proclamations to be read into the record. Thank you. I put my glasses on. I still messed up. Madam Clerk?
Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, January 31, 2023, to be City and State PA Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Council President Smith also presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 30, 2023, to be Heather Howard Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Now, can we have a motion to approve in a second?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first registered speaker? And the first registered speaker is Matt Mahoney. Is Matt here? Okay. Good morning. Thank you for waiting so patiently.
Hi, good morning. Well, my name's Matt Mahoney. I'm a resident of the Greenfield Neighborhood in the City of Pittsburgh's Fifth District. I'm also a candidate for City Council in District Five. I came here, I didn't prepare comments, but I was encouraged to submit public comments after the recent media and, I guess, legislative action referring to youth violence in our city. I was disheartened to see the, the sort of command and control approach with imposing a hard curfew. And I'm glad to see that we're walking that back. Just a little bit of background. I grew up outside the city, in a very small town, and coming to the city as a kid was always the biggest joy. There was always the allure of diversity, culture. There was an attractive quality to coming to the city. And I'm hopeful that we'll come to a solution that includes our youth and includes our youth voices in whatever solution may come or whatever actions are taken by city council. I understand there's a committee that's being considered, and I highly encourage members of council to include our youth on that committee in some form or capacity, so that they have an actionable voice at the table and aren't further marginalized from the issue. I have two kids myself, and I've learned a tremendous amount from their experiences over the past couple of years through COVID. Mental health is a strong issue in our communities. My wife works in the mental health field, and I've seen firsthand how mental, mental health issues are really significantly facing our youth. We need to take the issue seriously, but with a compassionate and empathic approach. So, I highly encourage everyone, when, when considering this issue, that we invite our youth to the same table with our adults to take action and make appropriate, take appropriate steps to ensure youth have a voice and they're part of the solution. That's all. Thank you.[1640.21][1640.21](Applause).
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullin. Naomi Mullin? Is Naomi with us?
Good morning.
Good morning, Naomi. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. Thank you.
I honor my husband, who is a true public servant from the 1970s until 2021. He worked to the very last minute he was allowed to work. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. Here's the situation. One, an excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. It should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. It must be torn down. Parks and trees, Pittsburgh funds, tax money can be used to make it a green space. The residents of Bon Air will care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes? same table with our adults to take action and make appropriate, take appropriate steps to ensure youth have a voice and they're part of the solution. That's all. Thank you.
And our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen? Is Naomi with us? Naomi Mullen?
Good morning.
Good morning, Naomi. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. Thank you.
I honor my husband, who is a true public servant from the 1970s until 2021. He worked to the very last minute he was allowed to work. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. Here's the situation. One, an excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. It should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. It must be torn down. Parks and trees, Pittsburgh funds, tax money can be used to make it a green space. The residents of Bon Air will care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? The Bon Air Elementary School was once a shining example of what the city public school could be. Instead, the Pittsburgh Public School Board has chosen to squander the building. The residents at the time of the construction did not want or approve of anything but a school to exist there. We, the property owners, taxpayers, voters, and caretakers of our neighborhood are the real stakeholders. We say, take it down. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. This was read at my husband's funeral. And it was written by Italian chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had questions, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Balsuider, Seoul, Republic of Korea. The Korean people really need our help. Global phase in variance at work. Global Intelligence Society, U.S., national candidate for president 2024. Vote by vote of verification and uncensored freedom of speech and public comment. Educated at the universities of Oxford, Pittsburgh, and London, among many other institutions. A concern of council is the rules of council. Is the 2023 rules of council law? Is the 2023 rules of Pittsburgh City Council not law? I'll take your silence to be yes. Is Rock 34C3 the golden legal rule on free speech and public comment? Quote, "Members of the public are responsible to deliver their comments in such a manner as to not breach the order and decorum of city council. Breaches of decorum include, but are not limited to, speaking outside of allotted time, shouting, vulgarity, profanity." One, is it Asha? What is Asha Asharia? Profanity. Asha Asharia is Nigerian Hausa for profanity. Does Hausa Keen Lovell ban Zenari Goldkashi? Two, where is the Warakuchi profanity? Word list, Warakuchi is Japanese Nahongo for profanity. Does Nahongo kind gross bond with Ogon Gold Jedi Kotoba? Three, who decides what is irreverentia? Profanity. Irreverentia is Mexican Espanol for profanity. Is Espanol fluent Kail Smith? The FS, free speech, public comment, despota? De oro? Four, when does applicable law, taken from the rules of council 2023, enforcement for entvahung, profanity, come into play? Entvahung is one word in German Deutsch for profanity. Does Deutsch von Straßberger say lo to the Goldfarol Nuremberg Codecs? Apply that to Palestine. If Rock 34C3 is law, arrest should follow a breach. If Rock 34C3 is not law, council has no foundation for legal enforcement. That is my position.
And our next speaker is Ikona Halmaquina. Is she online? She's not on. Ikona Halmaquina.
Good morning.
Okay.
Good morning. Grand morning. In my county, Alhaka In, my title is Ikona Halmaquina and the grant in for the AIPAC Confederacy of Evergreen American People. I have some recommendations for city council from the people that you serve. The recommendations of the people. As I listen to the public outcry of the people you serve and were elected to serve, it is my duty to bring their concerns to you because city council hasn't done enough to make the people a part of this process. You received a lot of feedback from the rare public information sessions that you held for the ARP Fund. I am still not sure why you even went out your way to do so because you were given the opportunity to implement dozens, if not more, of great ideas from the community directly. You failed to do so. Instead, you all made the egregious decision to bail out the already well-off corporate entities, corporate insurance companies, and hospitals, who already do not do enough to contribute to society by avoiding paying taxes. How is it that this city also is still considering a curfew for an already marginalized population of people? Children up to the age of 17 will now have a curfew of 10 p.m. You have now criminalized wanting to be outdoors. And with nowhere to play and nothing to do because the rec centers across the city are all mostly closed, at least in the so-called black and brown neighborhoods, even the Bible, Bible itself cautions against this idle mindset because we know that it is the devil's workshop. The opportunity has knocked. Will you answer? I also would like to bring light in remembering Tyree Nichols, Michaela Bryant of Ohio, Jalen Walker of Ohio, Keenan Anderson, and countless others. Because before the cameras were rolling, there was also David Streeter of Pittsburgh PA, Bernard Rogers of Pittsburgh PA, Jerry Jackson of Pittsburgh PA, my beloved brother Jerome Smith and Michelle Rengen, who died as a result of a police chase that was deemed to be unlawful. A police chase where you were chasing a suspect, your officers were chasing a suspect, and legitimately didn't have just cause to do so and caused him to flee from the police, and my brother Michelle Rengen were killed. I also want to speak about the non-probable cause traffic stops that also result in people dying the way that Tyree Nichols died.
Is there a time up? Has three minutes gone by? She's still on?
She's unmuted. She can talk.
You're still, you're muted if you can still talk. No?
She's unmuted.
She is unmuted? Chris, is the time? Do you set the timer? Chris, is the timer on?
Yeah. I don't, we just, we just, we got it out.
Okay.
We can, we're upstairs.
Okay, but she still has a tummy?
I'm expanding. I don't know how to help you.
I'm just going to wait a second till the time, to make sure the time expired. We're having some kind of technical difficulties apparently. Okay, okay. And that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address city council? Please approach the mic and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Paul Harrison from the Hill District, and today is my birthday. I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to be alive and breathing. But anyway, let me give to you out the scripture, the holy scripture, the royal scripture. When the day of Pentecost had fully come, they were all in accord in one place, and suddenly there came a sound from heaven as of a rushing mighty wind, and it filled the whole house where they were sitting. Then they appeared to them divided tongues as of fire as of one that sat on each of them. Let me go here. I'm the Lord of Lords and the King of Kings. I'm the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end. I'm the first and the last. Remember these words. The sun shall be turned into darkness and the moon in the blood before the coming of the great and awesome day of the Lord. And it shall come and pass that whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved. Men of Israel, hear these words. Jesus of Nathanael, a man attested by God to you by miracles and wonders and signs in which God did through him and your menace. As yourselves also know, him being delivered by determined purpose and foreknowledge of God, you have taken by lawless hands and have crucified and put to death whom God raised up, loosed the pains of death because it was not possible that he should be held by it. For David says concerning him, I foresaw the Lord always before my face. He is at my right hand that I may not be shaken. Therefore my heart and tongue rejoice. I was glad moreover. My flesh will rest in hope. For you will not leave my soul in Hades, nor will you allow your holy one to see corruption. You have made none the ways of life. You make me full of joy in your presence. Well, I just want to tell you people, it's just good to be alive. The Holy Spirit, thank you, Father. Bless the city of Pittsburgh. Amen.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's Pittsburgh PA 15219, at the top of the hill. First, I wanted to start off by saying, a lot of times I come down, I'm telling you, I'm listening to 90.5 FM. So it was this weekend when I was listening, they talked about the police when they killed this young man. But they also said we're going to have a policewoman speaking about it. And they had Michelle Brackney. You remember her? I know you police officers do. Well, she went, she was working down south. She became the commander down there. I think she went back to college. I think they said she might have got her MA. But she's also teaching in college now. Now, they had Michelle. And I remember Michelle because my children was born in a van, and they had the DARE program. And she worked with us parents. Very, very caring policewoman. Now, I wanted to bring that out because I felt that she really cared about us, and she would come up to the school and talk to the children. She treated the children just like they were welcome and human beings, not that they were not the time and the place to be bothered with children, as Mr., our good friend says, Mr., whatever his name is. Because I really don't even want to speak about him because I was trying to come down with a joke because I was thinking about my mother. My mother was 92 when she died, and she was a fussy. And I got some of that from her. As you can tell, I can fuss when I really want to. Well, she used to say, if you would be talking to Ma, well, Ma, so, so, then if she thought you were lying, she would say, there goes that venomous snake raising its ugly head to spray, to spray that poisonous venom. And that's the way I look at gents. That's the way I look at gents. And to me, I feel like, well, I should come down and tell them that joke and tell them I'm starting them where I can laugh at you, the same way when Dr. Miller was talking. That language, all them languages, he was cussing like hell. He was cussing. But you don't know it, but you say, we can't speak. If you don't know the language, don't try to act like you're that intelligent. This man is a smart man. Me and him don't agree on everything, but I do believe that this man has the heart of a human being. He cares about people, children, even you. Sometime I say some things and he'll say, well, wait a minute, Brown, now look at how they look at it. And which you ought to be glad that he talks to me a lot of time because there's sometimes I would come down here. You probably would throw me out if I really spoke like Yvonne wants to do. I've been praying more. I've been asking God, please help me because they don't know what they don't know. And you don't want to see it. You have your eyes are covered like you're blind because you've made up your mind already what you're going to do. Like when Mr. Burgess come screaming at me because I had a sign.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess. Councilman Burgess, Chair?
Noted Papers, Madam President.
Chair HR. And then we go on to Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Reverend. Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1168. Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 203 effective May 14, 2022, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for Trail Condition Study to Accept the Grant and Authorize Necessary Expenditures. Bill Number 1169. Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the West Ohio Street Bridge Project, where PWSA will be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work described herein and itemized in Exhibit B at an amount not to exceed $285,777.25 and increase of $54,377.25 from the previously executed contract agreement as authorized by Resolution Number 636 of 2018. Bill Number 1170. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Traffic Planning and Design, Inc. for Work on Frankstown Avenue Signal Design Project at a Cost Not to Exceed And Bill Number 1171. Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Norfolk Southern Railway Company for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase of the 28th Street Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $31,263.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1172. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 50, 26th Street, Pittsburgh PA 15222. Bill Number 1173. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at 4554 and 4564 Penn Avenue at the Parcels Number 49M, 121, 49M, 122, 49M, 123, 49M, 124, 49M, 125, 49M, 126, Pittsburgh 15224. Bill Number 1174. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1100 Shady Avenue, Plan of Lots 1100 Shady Avenue. Bill Number 1175. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities
Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Thirty-three Thirty-nine Ward Street, Pittsburgh, One Five Two One Three. And Bill Number Nine Ten. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Fifty-six Ten Butler Street, Tenth Ward.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1176. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Ruth and John Banavat and Their Attorneys Burger and Green, P.C. in the Amount of eighty thousand dollars relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Case Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 1177. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman Thomas and Battle for Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed five thousand, two hundred and three dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1178. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code, Article Five, Section Nine Twenty-five Oh Six, Setbacks, to Update the Standards for Certain HVAC Equipment and Setbacks.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1179. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements or the Use of Existing Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh, the URA, and Industrial Arts Workshop, Inc. for the Creation of Artwork or Land Which is Owned by the URA and Which Is Intended to Be Transferred to the City of Pittsburgh. And Bill 1180. Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Eighty-Six of two thousand and twenty-one, Effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Through Two Thousand and Twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program by Reducing LED Streetlight Upgrades by One Million Dollars.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings. I have two resolutions. Let's take those first. Madam Clerk, please. Thank you.
Okay. Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1181. Resolution Authorizing Renaming Shortiers Field to Shortiers Wind Gap Field. And Bill Number 1182. Resolution Reappointing Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, I'm sorry, as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority for a Term to Expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
Thank you. I assure you, I'll be long gone before that. But anyway, and then the reapportionment bill, Madam Clerk.
I have another bill for you.
A different one? Okay.
Also, Bill Number 1196. Resolution Amending Resolution Number Three Ninety, Effective July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, entitled Resolution Adopting a Reapportionment Plan for the City Council Districts in the City of Pittsburgh as Set forth in the map approved by the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Standing Committee and Finally Passed by City Council on July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two by Correcting a Technical Error in the Legislative Text of Resolution Number Three Ninety of two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to waive Rule Eight for Bill 1196, the reapportionment bill? Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda Meeting. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, for the two communications, can we do those next?
Bill Number 1188. Communication from Mayor Ed Gany Submitting Executive Order Twenty Twenty-three Oh One, Dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. And Bill Number 1189. Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Request on Behalf of the Department of Public Safety for Anna Bokenauer Per the Act and Pay Policy Revised in June, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Madam Clerk, for the reapportment, reapportment, I should have asked, is there a motion to interview, a motion to read, receive, and file? Which one? Does anyone want to interview me? Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file? Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, Madam Clerk, the rest of the appointments.
Bill Number 1183. Resolution Appointing Annalise Martinez as a Member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for Term Concurrent with that of the Mayor. Bill 1184. Resolution Apporting Gerard Winston as a Member of the Civic Design Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for Term Concurrent with that of the Mayor. Bill 1185. Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Linnea Lincoln as Assistant Director Operating in Special Revenue in the Office of Management and Budget. Bill Number 1186.
Those were just the appointments.
Those were the appointments. Okay, is there anyone, would you like to have a motion to interview? Would you like to interview? We're holding the other ones for interviews too, for the same committee. So do you want to interview these people as well? I think if we're interviewing the others, we should interview them all.
Bush, aye.
Or interview none. Okay.
Second.
Motion to interview. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll get those scheduled.
And Bill 1186. Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Stephanie Turman as a Member of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board for Term to Expire January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. And Bill 1187. Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Robert Pomassina as a Member of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board for Term to Expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
These are pointing, and it says, the only motion, can we hold for interviews? These are informing? We don't have an opportunity to interview for these?
You can, but these are just informing you.
Bush, receive, receive. Read, receive, and file.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm going to have just a little discussion. I think that this is tied into our pension and that this should have been worth an interview. I think that if something goes wrong with this authority, we'll wish that we had had an opportunity to interview at least some of the people on here. I give professional courtesy to elected officials, but I think there are some that we need to know and understand. And maybe I'll call for a post-agenda on the parking authority, see which direction we're going in. Thank you. So we have motions, read, receive, and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, objections?
There's no opportunity to interview?
It said read, receive, and file. They're just informing us. Were you interviewed?
You can, we can still interview them should we choose, but it's not up to us whether or not they will serve. Question, interview.
So I think we'll do a post-agenda because then we can have some opportunity to discuss the direction of the parking authority, which our pension is so deeply tied to.
I'm sorry. I had to step out to take a call about my pending surgery. Can I chime in on that?
Please.
Thank you. So I may not be here. I hate to complicate matters. I'll share something a little bit later in the meeting. But I do think it would be hooves to, to interview parking authority candidates. I would agree with members if they've so suggested that we do that. Even though I, I may not be here to participate, I'm sorry, or I may be participating remotely. But I would support that.
Can we have a professional courtesy for the elected official?
That's a, that's a very interesting question. Yes, Madam President.
Okay. So just for the two non-elected, can we have a motion to interview?
Yeah, one of the reasons, if I may, Madam President, is the parking authority is so tightly connected to the Parking Enhancement District, which provides for the clean team and other amenities in the South Side. I know the councilwoman here wishes to pursue a, it's a mobility enhancement district. But I believe that would be tied to the parking authority as well, too. And that would just raise my comfort level a little bit if we could interview those new members, please.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm just going to say, I, I don't know the other two people, but I do know the elected officials. So I'm okay there. I just don't know the other two. So I'd like to make sure that we have some, some conversation about the direction of parking authority in general. So I think with the interview would be great. And if we need to, we'll hold for a, we'll also have a post-agenda as well. And the next time, I'll be more cautious of what I allow to come. I actually talked to Madam Clerk about not putting appointments on my, my schedule until we have a conversation. So with that said, can we have a motion to hold, a motion to hold for interview and a second, correct? And we voted all in favor? Okay. And then the next bills, Madam Clerk, was there anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay. With that said, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is final action. And we move on to Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1162. Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1115. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of John Connors and His Attorneys, O'Brien Coleman and Wright, LLC in the Amount of ninety thousand dollars in Settlement of Litigation Filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania at Docket Number. Bill Number 1129. Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements or Existing Agreements for Consulting Services but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the City Controller's Office at a Cost Not to Exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? We'll vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed, we'll vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Kraus, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And this. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Yeah.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1163. Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three with a negative recommendation. And Bill, Bill 1139. Ordinance Amending Pittsburgh City Code, Chapter Six Oh Four, Curfew, Section Six Oh Four Point Oh Nine.
Thank you. And if you're supportive of the negative recommendation, you vote aye when your name is called. And those not supportive of voting it down, then please vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. So you're voting aye.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received. The legally required number of votes is finally negative. Thank you. It's good to have the attorney sitting behind me and the clerks in front of me. And when we, the rest of the bill, the other bill, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Kraus also presents Bill Number 1164. Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1161. Resolution to Establish a Youth Family Resource Center Advisory Committee.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Councilman Kraus.
Yeah, I just would like to, to recognize, again, the importance of building relationships to accomplish the goals we set. And I, I know this is near and dear to your heart, Madam President. And I know your intent is, is good. And, and I just, I want to recognize you and Mayor Gany for working collectively and cooperatively, collectively and cooperatively to, to, to reach a goal that is somewhat controversial and difficult. And, but I know your heart's in it. And I just, I want to recognize the, your effort in reaching out to Mayor Gany and working collectively, cooperatively, to bring us to where we are today to at least have a, a healthy discussion about how best to intervene and protect our kids that are so vulnerable today. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I just going to add that I think that there was a lot of discussion, a lot of conversation. But I apologize for not bringing this to my colleagues sooner because I think you were all blindsided by it. And, and some of you, some of you I've spoke to briefly. But for the public, just so they know, we don't have to ever notify council members or the mayor's office when we introduce legislation. But we do it as a courtesy because you taught me how to build relationships here. And that's one of the things I do value. It does, it's one of the things that helps us be so successful here. It takes five votes to get anything done. And you can't be an island, or you're just going to sit here and be a noisemaker. You're not going to be, you're not going to get anything done, ever. And so I think that, you know, if you're really here to serve the people, you're trying to work together. So I apologize for not getting this to you all sooner. But I do want to say that I think it was call after call, conversation after conversation, where people were just so tired of doing the same things that haven't been working. And so we wanted something different to try to say, okay, let's hit the pause button. How can we save kids from being shot every single day in this region? And I think the mayor shares that same goal. I know that he shares that same goal. I know that we all share that goal, that we want to see less violence in our city. We want to see less violence in downtown Pittsburgh. But we also want to see less violence in every one of our neighborhoods and in the suburbs surrounding us. So we're trying to think of, what can we do? And I think, you know, resource centers are great. Getting the kids there is going to be the conversation, I think, that we have. How do we get kids to these centers across, and if we can, we open them across the region. And I do want to thank Pittsburghers for reaching out. I've gotten so many phone calls from people thanking us for taking, at least starting the conversation, taking some action. People in support of, you know, what we were doing and people who had concerns with what we were doing. But I actually had somebody from the East End call me and offer to bring three busloads of people down to talk about how important this is. So I want to thank those people who reached out to us. They reached out in big numbers and, and they made a lot of comments about a lot of things that were said. But I think in the end, everybody has the same goal. How can we keep kids safe? How can we get them there? And can those resource centers be something that helps to change things? Or are they going to be something that takes so long, we don't have time to, you know, save a kid tomorrow? So I think that's the conversation. What are we doing for the kids tomorrow, today? The kid, I mean, we've already lost so many kids already to violence. It's, it's a shame that it's taken this much, a piece of legislation, to talk about saving kids, to have a conversation about saving kids. I, I just can't imagine this being in any of our communities and allowing it just to continue. And, and I just, I do want to thank and acknowledge the work that Reverend Burgess, Councilman Lavelle, and yourself, and Councilman Coghill have done in the past in these areas. And I think that you've done, we've all done different things in our ways. But I do know that Reverend, I tell people this all the time. Reverend Burgess is one of the most knowledgeable people in preventive measures and in terms of violence. So I do want to acknowledge him and his work. But I also want to say, those are long-term goals sometimes, and so they take a while. Our kids don't have twenty minutes sometimes, let alone, you know, twenty days, twenty, twenty years. I mean, sometimes we need something, an intervention for the moment. And so for that, I just want to say, that's where that thought process was coming from. What can we do to intervene in what's occurring today on our streets? Because it's not, I mean, now, there's innocent bystanders being hit. There's children dying, you know, that were innocent bystanders. We all know the sad story. But I do think that we're going to have a public process with this. I'm going to appoint people that work for the city and elected officials, our council, my colleagues. And the mayor is going to appoint the people from his administration who are experts in this area, who know how to get a center open, who know how to do things in terms of public safety. So I think we're going to do great in those areas and the appointments. But under each of those, we're going to have, I think, my idea is to have some subcommittees. But under each of those, we're gonna have, I think, my idea is to have some subcommittees that we have a group with youth. And I already talked to Councilwoman Gross about bringing together the city, school district, the county, the state, our elected officials that represent us. And so she and I will have that discussion about how we can do that. Because I want it to be that we have a very public conversation, that no more is this gonna be, we're talking behind closed doors, we're talking, you know, making, at our meetings, trying to figure out what we're doing. The public wants to be at the table. And I do want to say, there's a lot of people who want to be at the table who've been at the table. And I want to say, what are you doing? Because this is where we are. And I know there's some that are doing amazing work, amazing work. But maybe those are the people that we want to say, they need lifted up and they need additional funding. They need additional resources. It's a long conversation. I'm not gonna have it all here. But I will be calling for public hearings and post-agendas. And we'll be scheduling a public process with the mayor's office. And I do want to thank Mayor Gani for being a partner in this because we do definitely see things differently, how we, how we get to where we want to be. But we see the end goal the same. And so I really want to thank him very much for working with us on this. I think that he's eager to, he, he wants to see his city safe, just like we all do. I mean, who doesn't want to see the city safe? So with that said.
Can I add one thing?
One more thing?
Yeah, I hate to, I hate to even open up this conversation, but I think it's, it's ultimately a necessary conversation. Councilman Burgess and I go way back on this, sometimes agree, sometimes disagree on this. But I can't help but remember 15 years ago, this council took a very strong stand on illegal handguns. And we passed legislation that is on the books to, to ban straw purchase and to track, to track illegal firearms. It's never been enforced. A lot of that has to do with state law and the particulars around it. I understand that a number of municipalities, townships, and boroughs have passed straw purchase handgun legislation. Having said that, I can't help but wonder that a young person that was born that year is 15 today. That young woman, that young man is 15. And is it possible they might not have had a handgun in their hand today had that legislation truly been upheld and, and enforced? It does come down to the 400 million handguns that flood the streets of this nation like a cancer. And our most vulnerable citizens, our young kids, you know, with, you know, their entire lives ahead of them are being, are being decimated by this unbelievable inability of, of our nation to do anything about, about illegal handguns. You can, you can print a, with a 3D printer, you can print a handgun on a computer today. Madam President, how many times have we had this talk at 10 o'clock at night? You know, no, no serial number, no way to trace it. You know, you can buy parts online today, assemble your own handgun, and there's no tracking, no tracing of the gun, no serial number. And, you know, and while those in positions of power and authority sit, you know, constipated and unable, or unwilling, not unable, unwilling to do anything to protect our kids, you know, and reap the benefits of, of those endorsements from NRA and the, and the like, while our kids kill one another in the street. It's, it's a crime. And I honestly don't know how we will ever, ever find solution until we get a handle on the, this, this cancer of access to handguns to, to young people. Just had to say that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, I just want to say, Council President, thank you for sort of bringing this topic up. I know the road was a little bit rocky getting there. But I, I do think it's actually quite helpful to have such a specific ask, right? And to have this elevated in the, in the public discussion of, of centers, you know, by the summer, centers where kids can go at night and have activities. I do also want to acknowledge the, the decades of work that community organizations across this city have been doing with our youth to address these issues and also how great it is that now through the Stop the Violence Fund, the, the money is there. So I think this is a good point where, together with council, with the community organizations who are on the ground with the kids, you know, who know the kids personally, the funds are there, the spaces are there, right? In the communities, churches, whatever, whatever that may look like, to, to actually, to have just this very specific ask, right? Like, like event, whatever it may be, events and the, in, at night in the summer, it's always helpful to have a very specific goal. And I think that this committee, I, I think that this should be a fairly straightforward place to get to, given the money and the organizations that are already doing the work. I, I hope that, I hope this goes smoothly, so.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman.
So I was gonna chat about this actually later in the meeting, but I might as well put it all here at the same place. Recently, there's, CNN released, documented a study that was in the Journal of Nature and Human Behavior. They did a global study on the impact of the pandemic on children. It says that, you know, on average, children lost 35% of the school year because of the pandemic. But that's a general number that's worldwide, not specific to this country. But it also says that that number is significantly more in at-risk communities. Since the pandemic, probably at-risk kids in our city have lost, and most of them go to the public schools, have lost somewhere between a year and two years academic study. They were already behind a year to two, they were already behind a year to 18 months. Now they maybe see somewhere between two to three years. I sit here, I rarely say this, but I'm tired. We do all of the talk and our kids can't read. Our kids can't read. Our kids, the numbers are startling. They can't read and they can't do math. And, and, and we wonder, we sit here, not us, but we as a city, know that they have been, we have been failing these kids for generations. It is not a year problem, it is not a decades problem. And everything we're doing is failing. The public schools are failing our kids. That's the truth. We also know at least the beginnings of how to make this different. The study says, of course, longer school days, year-round school, academic support programs, all the things that I did for my kids and what, what most people who have a little bit of means do for their kids, right? We do that naturally. And in poor communities, those things are wanting. A year, close to a year ago, in April 2023, I called for a public partnership between the city and the schools to begin to coordinate what the city does, what the school does, to create all these other things that we can do. The resource programs are actually, we don't really need to study them, they're easy. The resource centers say, in Philadelphia, they're from seven to two o'clock. They're in community-based organizations. They, they open them up regionally. It's not even difficult, not that much money. We can do that in a few weeks if that's what we want to do. But what we, what we are, what we are, what we're not doing right is we're not coordinating a comprehensive effort to help these kids. In Lomer, the kids are doing better. Why are they doing better? Because it's a comprehensive approach. Their housing is better, their neighborhood is better. We're targeting their skills specifically. We know how to do this. But everybody wants to stay in their silo, you know? They don't want to coordinate. It has to be coordinated. The rec, the kids are in school for a short period of time. They're at home in the neighborhood much longer than that, right? They're in school eight hours, they're with us 16 hours. The idea that there is not a public coordination between the schools and the cities is almost criminal. I've been very quiet about it, but I'm actually very offended by it. The idea that we will not come together and do what the best interest of our kids, why our kids can't read and can't do math, is astonishing to me. Our kids are failing. This is an emergency, this is a crisis. If you want to, every study says this, you want to figure out where the kids are gonna go to jail at, do it by area code. The quickest way to figure out where the kids are gonna go to jail at, do it by area code. And that area code is gonna be in dilapidated communities with no development, with no amenities, and bad schooling, and we know their future. Yet, every part of our system is in silos. The school board is by themselves, and the kids have been failing for two decades. But we're like, you know, it's okay. The school, we're kind of by ourselves trying to do our thing, and our kids are still shooting each other and failing. I have been saying this. It will never, my son, I have a son who had something called Blount Disease, which his knees were turning outwards. One side of his knees were growing faster than the inside of his knees. And we brought him to the doctors and they showed me this, the condition. And they said, there's only two ways to handle it. And he was, I think, 13. And they said to me, either you break both his legs and reset it. And then, and, and they said, this is the way you do this, moderately. And I cried, I remember crying. And the doctor, I could not bring myself to break my kid's legs. I just couldn't do it. And the doctor said, there's, there's one other way. There's only one doctor who does this, it's the old-fashioned way. We don't do this anymore. We don't recommend you do it. But there is another approach, and the only doctor can do it is retiring. But maybe he'll do this for your son. And so we met this doctor. And what they do is they put staples on the inside of the growth plate of the knee so that one side slows down while the other side catches up, right? The ones that's faster, they put the staples in. It takes years to correct, but you don't have to break their legs, right? And, you know, we prayed on it, and I cried about it. And so we put the staples in, and he did recover from it, right? But I realized that I had to do something because his disease was killing him, was going to make him bow-legged and arthritic and cripple him in later life. That's what they told the outcome would be. He would be significantly bow-legged, like, not even bow-legged, his, his knees would be on angles. It was starting to angle out. And he would be crippled in his middle-aged years, and he would have all these, so I had to do it. Until we get serious about making sure that every kid in this city can read and write, what do you think they're gonna do? What do you think they're gonna do? They can't read, they can't do math. What do you expect to happen? And we're talking as if we don't know that we know this. And it just, sometimes I get, I get passionate about it. I've spent my entire life, my entire career, trying to help kids, trying to help students. I've spent my whole life doing this. And it is, I think, I'm not saying that a public school partnership that I modeled from California is the best option. But it, I don't know how else you're going to get everybody, all the sectors in one place, and coordinate everything at the same place. So the same thing we're doing in schools should be the, we should be, we should be supporting that after-school programs. We have to do, we, and, and then we have to coordinate that with housing, which is a public, we have all public endeavor. We have to coordinate these efforts. We cannot let everybody do everything at the same time, all sorts of places, and the kids are failing. We did, and I've been saying, I've said, I introduced legislation a year ago. I've been saying this for 20 years. I don't understand it. I don't understand why we cannot publicly partner together, bring all the resources available, bring the best minds together, and say, these are the best practices. We know what they are, it's not even a secret. You go, you go to China, go to Japan, go to Sweden, go to Switzerland, right? What do they do with those kids? They go to school and then they go to after-school programs. And what do those after-school programs do? They don't color, they don't, they don't color, they don't make kites, they don't go play basketball. What do they do in those after-school programs? They do mathematics, they do English, they do foreign languages. So what did I do with my kids? My kids, I'm not saying it's great, but that's what I did with my kids. My kids went to school and they did two to three hours of homework every day from first grade to 12th grade, every day, each of my four kids. Did after-school academic enrichment, either at a program or at my home, for two to three hours every day. Not some days, every day. Seven days a week, 12 months a year, 52 weeks a year. That's how you, and that's, if you want to really do this, since the kids are two and three years behind, every time we wait, they get further behind. It's multiple. So that when they come out of high school, we got black kids coming out of high school reading at 7th grade level, doing math at the 6th grade level. And we know this. It ain't secret. It is not like, it's not secret, it's in the reports. We know this. And yet, we are not in, in, in any kind of, in any kind of comprehensive way coming together and saying, enough is enough. We're going to now make sure our kids are academically proficient as a way, and again, it's gonna take time. But the violence, until we do these comprehensive, coordinated approaches to helping kids and families, this will never stop. And it gets, it makes me, annoys me that we do these things in silos when, when we know from other countries, other reports, other studies across the country that this is not the way you help these kids succeed.
Thank you, Reverend. Anything else from any other members? I'm just gonna add that Pittsburgh Public Schools does have a difficult job to do. They absolutely have a difficult job. And yes, I do know that you're right about a lot of kids failing there. And we do need to do something. But I'm going to say Pittsburgh Public Schools doesn't have the, they're not afforded the same opportunity as charter schools are, where they're able to turn kids away. They are serving all kids. And so sometimes they're educating the kids that are coming to them that are struggling, that they are, they are in abusive homes, they are in foster care, they are in situations that they can't learn and don't have, they're hungry, there's, you know, they don't have a house. There's all sorts of reasons why kids might be failing. And you're right, we need a comprehensive approach. I absolutely agree with that. And that's one of the reasons I asked Councilwoman Gross to bring everyone to the table. Because if we're not doing this together, we're not doing it. And so I think the kids are relying on us to do this and to do this right. But I also think our own URA has to be part of that because I see them creating areas of poverty by their disinvestment in many neighborhoods. And not just in the, in the poor black communities. I see them creating it in neighborhoods that were stable and then allowing things not to happen there. So it's like they're part of the problem, not part of the solution. And so I think that's a conversation that we also have to have. But I think the county's DHS is something that we have to talk about. And I think CYF is something we have to talk about. There's, our kids are going through a lot, their families are going through a lot, and it, the city's reeling from it all. We're in this together. And I think with this, with that said, I just want to say, I think that Mayor Gani and I will work together on this and we'll make sure that we're all doing what's best for the city of Pittsburgh. You know, there's a lot of things being said and, and a lot of being questioned about that, you know, where the mayor stands on, on different issues. And I just want to say, I think, it, it hurts sometimes when you hear people criticizing any of us. I don't like hearing any of you criticized. I don't like hearing him criticized. I don't like hearing previous administrations criticize. Because what person wouldn't want their city to be great? What person wouldn't want their city to be safe? And so nobody gets in these jobs because they want to see things fall apart. So it's, I feel like if you're gonna be part of the solution, then be part of the solution. And the media is part of that. They can't just sit back, attack us, attack one another, attack, I mean, attack, attack people for the things they are or are not doing. They have to be part of the solution in helping us to bring together ideas and promoting the good things that are happening. And so I just, I just want to say, we're all in together, that's it. With that said, the bill having, I'm sorry, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required amount, number of votes is finally passed. Thank you, everyone, for that and for your help. I know you're gonna be really helpful coming forward. With that said, we have Councilman Burgess, Committee on Human Resources. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 1165. Reported a committee on human resources for January 25, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1124, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Goodwill of Southwestern PA for administrative services related to the 2023 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a cost not to exceed $200,000. And Bill Number 1125, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny and partner for work for the shared operation and administration of the 2023 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 and for the payment of the costs thereof.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill's having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology. That's a mouthful. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1166, Reported at Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for January 25, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1130, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Mon Oakland Connector Four Mile Run by $1,400,000 and Increasing Facility Improvements, Recreation, and Senior Centers by $1,000,000 and Play Area Improvements by $400,000."
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill. Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. Councilwoman.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1167, Reported at Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for January 25, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1126, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at 939 West North Avenue at Parcels Number 22S-126 and 22S-113.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And now it's time for motions and resolutions. Can I have a motion for an executive session on Bill 1116, appointing Krisha Kubiak as member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority? Do you have a motion for...
So moved.
Executive session, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and we'll get that scheduled. And meeting announcements this afternoon at 1:30 PM, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda on the state of policing in the city of Pittsburgh, chaired by Councilman Anthony Coghill. Tomorrow, Wednesday, February 1st, at 10:00 AM, council will hold our standing committees' meeting. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. The meeting is chaired by Councilman Lavelle. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up forms on the council meeting webpage.